Commissioners, one of the concerns I have is enforcement of county ordinances. You know, we can write ordinances and they all sound good, you put them on paper, but unless you...
Why don't you stand right here?
Yeah.
And stand here so it goes to there.
My question and my comment to the commissioners is enforcement of county ordinances. You know, we can have all the ordinances, sound ordinances, quiet time ordinances, fire ordinances, all those things, but unless there's somebody up there checking the enforcement of those ordinances, you might as well not have them on the book. So my request to the commissioners is please look at increased enforcement. I don't know how, if you want to do it with police or special deputies to do that, but especially during the summertime, we have thousands of, I guess thousands, of guests, and they're building fires all over the forest, which is fine, but you know, there's been reports of open fires or smoldering fires left, and the campsite's vacant. So if somebody's checking on those things, I think that would help. So that's my plea. Enforce your court order ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
So concern have is over House Bill 216. Kind of keep hearing about that, you know, we're having issues in Island Park. Right there? Okay, sorry. Okay. Issues with it. And you know, I don't know if that's really true. A lot of it has more to do with, you know, that maybe Fremont County hasn't really enforced the existing ordinances and, you know, made changes, you know, to eliminate some of the most of those concerning items. So the language in HB 216, you know, it shouldn't have caused failed enforcement. Its intent was to, you know, not allow jurisdictions to prohibit short-term rentals, but you know, what it did say was that you can implement such reasonable regulations as deemed necessary to safeguard the public health, safety, and general welfare in order to protect the integrity of, you know, residential neighborhoods. The current proposal does not protect the safety or the integrity of the neighborhoods, nor does it suggest that short-term rentals should not fit into the neighborhoods, or that the number is allowed to be based on sewer or septic capacity. What it does not say is that you can't insist on reasonable parking, safe roadways within neighborhoods, or restrict the number of occupants to what the average home in the area would fit based on the number of, you know, actual like bedrooms in the home. And so what else it doesn't say is that you must, you know, permit larger accessory dwellings or multiple short-term rentals on a lot. So that's just some of the, you know, issues there. Anyways, being called short-term doesn't really mean much when, you know, you've got some neighborhoods that are overflowing, you know, eight months of the year, and there's some long-term effects on the neighborhoods. And anyways, so basically, I guess, kind of what we're really asking for is just, you know, reasonable regulations to protect neighborhoods and single-family residential areas, which, you know, the ten of the properties was platted. The vast majority of short-term rentals, you know, they're excellent with concern understanding landlords, but you know, the current trend is kind of leaning towards, you know, corporate owner properties from companies and, you know, that's more of a, it's a business and there's less regulation for you to institute more issues you're going to have. So anyways, short-term industry is going to grow, and it's a new thing. Seen that last couple of years. And Island Park has always, you know, had homes for rent, but it's always been kind of a, you know, a community too. So anyways, that's just my concerns.
And one thing I forgot, if you will tell which subdivision you're from.
Can you speak back? And loud.
Okay, sorry, I'll try. Okay, so I'm Lisa Linger, I'm from Pine Haven. So Fremont County Commissioners, I want to thank you for allowing us to speak, and I appreciate your willingness to come and listen to us. Okay. So as state House Bill 216 was written for people in Idaho to protect residential neighborhoods, I've been coming to Island Park ever since I was a little girl, summers and winters with my parents. They have a cabin here, and they've had it for years. We now live here year-round and with my family, but Island Park is changing from what I remember when I was a child. We moved from St. Anthony, and St. Anthony and Island Park are two completely different communities. Remember though, that Island Park is a community with neighborhoods. Change is part of life, and for sure, is a part of life for sure, but as county commissioners and as residents, we need to protect what we love most about Island Park. Short-term rentals are relatively new. The neighborhoods of Island Park are not designated for 15 to 20 people, four cars, an RV, multiple tents, and a small 1,200-foot square home, sitting on maybe a quarter or a half acre lot. This is just not a few weeks out of the year, but seven to eight months out of the year, making an impact on the lives of those who live here every single day. I am not solely against short-term rentals. I'm in the medical field, and tourists come from all over the country, and I love helping them. I see an increase, though, in people that have been brought by short-term rentals, places to stay. It's a strain on our medical resources, our EMTs, the clinic, and the police to protect the citizens of Island Park, to enforce traffic violations. So not only medical, EMS, and police, but all resources are stretched to the max, and there is not enough long-term housing for the workers to rent since everything is being rented as short-term. Local landlords who are responsible, available, licensed, and permitted are not the problem. Many of these renters, rental owners, are out of state, and they are just here to make money with no care of the overall impact to the community. There are those that rent their own cabin out to offset the cost of their home when they're not using it. And this is great, but there needs to be someone managing this close by that can take care of issues that may arise. They need to limit the number of occupants, and that they need to be not licensed. As commercial investors take hold of homes, renting them as short-term rentals, this also allows for no housing for families wanting to move into Island Park due to inflated cost of properties and homes. Landlords who are nearby and regulated have more control over short-term rentals. Thank you and just consider Island Park.
And Ken Watts and Patsy Watts. Watts on deck.
Good evening. I'm Richard Voss, I'm here with my wife Marley. Can everybody hear me back in the cheap seats?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good. I don't have anything so formal written out, but I do have a few concerns that I'd like to toss out to you and for your consideration. One is I understand a new development code is being put together, but there have been no public hearings at this part of the county for us to put it in. The fact that you've got a standing-room-only crowd here lets me know that people up here are concerned about what goes in that code, and putting, getting our input after a draft has been written is kind of putting the cart in front of the horse. We need to have input upfront. It would be good if the planning and zoning committee could hold a couple of their meetings up here before that draft goes to publication. I think that would be very, very helpful, and everybody will be going there. Second thing is, the commissioners' meetings, I understand there's 36 of those a year, the first month, first three Mondays of every month, is that correct?
Normally, we usually end up meeting more, but...
Okay. How many of those meetings are formally held in Island Park?
Zero.
Why not?
Because they're held at the courthouse in St. Anthony, and that's...
But is there anything saying that commissioners could not come here and hold one of their commission meetings?
Yes.
Or a quarterly commission meeting? Is there anything in any of the bylaws or any of the constitution that says it can't be done?
We have to be at the kind of seat that...
So let's try to ask questions.
Okay. I'll move on to that one. The other thing, technology. Is the commission in favor of using technology for the commission meetings so everybody doesn't have to drive 50 miles or 60 miles to get there, but can participate, such as Zoom or FaceTime or some of the other types of technologies that are available?
We're currently in process of implementing equipment to address that as we speak.
Okay.
I'm going to interrupt one thing right here.
Yes, sir.
Now, there's a lot of good people here, but we're not here as on trial.
Right.
I don't think we need to answer questions.
Exactly.
Right now, okay? So wherever the moderator is of this, you need to control that.
Okay.
Or we shouldn't, we shouldn't answer, or attempt to answer. That's what I think we need to kind of implement. Is that the way this is set up?
Under that, then I will apologize for my asking the questions, okay? But they are concerned, regardless, there are concerns that I know not only I have, but other people in the room have. So there's things I'd like you to take home and think about, and take back to the other folks that you would have to meet with, and make those considerations something that will help the folks here in Island Park feel like they're really a part of Fremont County, and not just a stepchild sitting out there on the side that's not getting the attention that they need. And I think that's about all I'll have to say.
Coming up, oh, be really careful. I talked to Abby Mace, the county clerk. She told me that next week they will be in training for Zoom, and they're hoping the week after that that it will be live. So they are working on that. I know a lot of you sent letters to the, letters to them about it. They are taking action. Please just give them a statement. We've got someone here taking all your notes, we're going to form committees afterward. So just focus on giving a statement to them, not ask questions. Thank you.
My name is Ken Watts, I live in solitude at Elk Run subdivision. My comment is in regard to the 2021 draft development code. We need a development code that protects our livability environment and our quality of life. A recent draft of the 2021 development code indicates that many develops in Island Park will be zoned cabin recreation. The draft code states, and I quote, "The cabin recreation zoning district is established because of the existence of many developments, primarily in the Island Park area, that were originally built or platted to the standards in place at the time they were developed, but would not comply with today's standards." The cabin recreation zone that's currently in the draft of the code that I have allows for 61 different uses within the cabin recreation zone. So yes, 61 different uses. Only eight of the 61 are residential uses. Examples in some of the allowed uses are a poultry farm, urgent care clinic, a bar, I'm for that. Convenience store, a small store, a major utility, motor vehicle service and repair, contractor's yard and shop, airport, heliport, and campground. So all of those are included within those 61 uses. Most of our subdivisions here in Island Park are residential subdivisions. I would guess 80, 90% of them are, and they should be zoned as residential, which would be R1 or R2. That would be consistent with the city of Island Park zoning, which is using R1 for subdivisions up here. Good zoning reduces conflicts. It does not create conflicts. Please help us with this zoning issue. We would like to be zoned residential because that's what our subdivisions are. And I have a letter here from Connie Keachlow that I was just given, and I'll pass that along to Jordan. It was to you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
And then Ron Kinnaston, and then Sherlene Kinsley.
There's a couple of chairs here too, if someone wants to sit down.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate you coming up here. And I'm Patsy Watts, and I live with him, so we're in the same subdivision. What I'd like to, I have a concern, and I'd just like to put it, if this was you, and this was happening across your street, because when I grew up, we had our kids in Idle Falls, we'd let them play out at night because we knew all of our neighbors, all the way around it. Right at the end of my driveway are 17 to 20 new people every three days. The cleaning lady comes in, and two hours later, the next group of 17 people come into that place. We looked up, and they are not, they are not, do not have a permit. That house is, one time, I, Ken and I came home from a snowmobiling activity, and as we drove in, here comes three young men on snow machines, whoop, past us. And then he was putting our machines away, I walked up the road to our house, and they accosted me, and they started talking to me and yelling at me because we didn't, in our subdivision, keep the roads plowed so that they could get in with their vehicles, no four-wheel drive, no snow tires, but they were mad because those people behind them, which was the people they're renting from, were paying their dues. They knew they were paying their HOA dues. They accosted me by myself. Then I called Ken and said, "That little guy over there," and then he didn't, wasn't quite as verbal with Ken as he was with me. And one time, we called the sheriff and asked him to come out. Well, he, we called him the next morning, and he came out and he said, "Thank you so much for calling me during the day. I hate coming out to these places at night. I live there." So I would just ask you to help us get some regulations, something to go in those places that we could have regulations. They left some, one of the renters through there left some fish for the bears to eat, and I kind of told them that the bears would end up being euthanized because of them leaving their food. Another lady left a bunch of food on our property, one of the renters, because she was, what did she say? She was, oh, recycling, but I wish she wouldn't recycle on my property. They just don't understand what's going on, and we need some help because 17 and 18 people in one house that was designed to have a single family is too much. If you could just help us get some regulations, we sure appreciate it up here. Thank you.
And then Sherlene Kinnaston.
Say it again.
Ron Kinnaston.
I guess I signed the wrong paper. I'm sorry. I thought you were signing in.
Okay. Liz Davie then.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for coming up here, and I appreciate it. We have a great working relationship. I am Liz Davie, I'm the district ranger up here for the Forest Service here in Ashton and Island Park. Just a couple of things that I would be great if we could work on together is OHV awareness, where can you drive a motorized vehicle and where you can't, and especially in the short-term rentals, to be able to provide maps, or some signage, or ways to interact with the motorized trail system on and off the forest, as well as the county roads and state highways. Be great if we can work on that together. Great if we can work on fire restrictions and firework restrictions like we did this year. Not sure we planned it, but it sure worked out well that we all had the same thing, so it wasn't confusing for the public, especially when they were visiting during 4th of July and the 24th of July. That worked out so well for our firefighters and for, I believe, the public. They weren't confused as to where they could have fireworks, because they couldn't, and where they couldn't have campfires. So we appreciate that. And then, on behalf of the Island Park Sustainable Fire Community, we had our strategic planning meeting last week, and several things came up that are important to me as the Forest Service, but also to the Sustainable Fire Community as well. Evacuation routes, having those very clearly signed with arrows and showing more than just Highway 20, showing some of the other routes that go out, like Yale Kilgore Road, Mesa Falls Highway, Fish Creek Road, 87, other ways that people could leave that they may not be aware of. Other places have, like Hurricane, or, or what's that flood thing? Yeah, tsunami. And they say, "Go that way," you know, and we have fires. And so just for people, because they may be familiar with that kind of system, to be able to do that. Also to have evacuation routes posted in some of those rentals, especially in the subdivisions where it's one way in, one way out. They may not know any other ways to get out because they came in the only way you could come in. And so to require that of homeowners, that there's an evacuation plan posted like there is on a hotel door, or something like that, you know, "Go this way, crawl on your hands and knees to get out of the hotel." Same thing, crawl on your hands and knees to get out of Yale. And then to be able to have a variety of places to post this information so that people on their smartphones can find it, find phone numbers, find places to call for emergencies or to get the emergency information, because most visitors won't have reverse 911 to Fremont County. They'll have it for some other place. And then working with the folks that have rentals, short-term rentals, Airbnbs, to require fuels reduction around their place, whatever that entails, and the Sustainable Fire Community can help with that, but so that people, when there is flames coming at them, they're not freaked out, nor are the firefighters saying, "Well, sorry, we can't go in there because that's a red rock and not a green rock." And that helps my firefighters as well. We don't do structured protection, but we do everything else if it threatens the national forests. So just if we could work together on those things, I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Bruce Arndt, and then Larry Staley, and Doug Button. So Bruce, you're next.
Commissioners, I guess I would ask, we just, we just redid the cities, all of our stuff as far as rentals and stuff.
Speak up.
I'm in the city council here, and I know the mayor's here somewhere too, but we just spent a lot of time working on our rentals and stuff. I would ask you to maybe take a look at what we've done. We have put some, some square footage in restrictions so that it restricts the number of people that can't be in them. We're not against them. There's, I own one, there's three of us on the council that are involved in rentals and management or owning them, and so we have put a lot of time into it. But one of the things that would really help Island Park is if we could get everybody under the same set of rules, because we get a lot of phone calls, and it's not, it's county rentals and not city rentals that we, you know, we have no, we have no jurisdiction over those. But, you know, you just, you might look at what we've done and see if that would help. There's quite a few here that have seen some of our rules, and I think they're livable, they don't restrict them to where they can't be used, and yet we have some control on what happens on those properties.
I'm Dr. Larry Staker. I live in Two Top Estates off Red Rock Road. And I would echo or second everything that Liz Davie said about the decisions on fires and so forth. My concern tonight is roads. We have 48 resident, residential areas or neighborhoods in Island Park, and a good majority of them do not have ingress and egress. Once they get in there, they're trapped. And I think the county needs to look at the road regulations carefully, especially for new developments. We have some going in north of us on Two Top, and I'll tell you what, they can't get a fire truck up the hill to Two Top, let alone to the new areas that are going in by. And I would plead with you to look at the county regulations for roads and insist that there be an ingress and an egress for every neighborhood onto a passable road. The other issue that I would speak to is fire prevention. That's the biggest risk for us this year. It may not be next year, but I think what Liz said should be seconded, thirded, and fourthed. We need help in preventing fires and notifying people about the risk. Thank you for being here.
Doug Button, and then Steve Halliday, and then Helen Tushir.
First off, I want to thank you guys for coming up here. I know it's a long drive. We experience it going the other way in time and time. Be careful going home, you know the animals are moving from 8:30 to 9:30. I happened to be at the meeting, I came in late when Terry addressed you folks a week or so ago, and the things that I remember from that was, we end up, Island Park, no matter what we talk about, we always end up on short-term rentals, and that's where the brunt of it was. And what I heard from you folks was, when we asked for help with enforcement, was there was no money for enforcement, there's nothing we can do, and then, and that's up to the planning and building. I said, "But the planning and building report to you. You guys are the head of our county. You're responsible for everything. You should be able to work with those folks. If we can't enforce our existing ordinances, aren't we, aren't we in violation of our own rules? And what are we making rules for if we can't enforce them? There's got to be something we can do. Let's put our heads together. Maybe a neighborhood watch or volunteer program where somebody isn't a deputy, but maybe they're a mar, you know, a rental marshal or something, and they go take pictures of violations, and they, they have a process where they can forward it to the sheriff or the planning and building, whatever. Somehow, there's got to be something we can do. We can't, we can't keep saying year after year after year, there's nothing we can do. We're pretty clever people, I know there's something we can do. There's got to be an answer. There's sure enough money in the rental business to sustain, to fund enforcement, I can guarantee that. Might have to raise, might have to raise some rates. Raise a million dollars. Raise a million dollars, and we can hire cars and whatever we need to do. I heard a rumor that the new, new development code rezones Island Park cabin recreation. Well, I don't know what that is, but it sounds like a multi-use designation, and it sounds like chaos to me. People live up here full-time, they're not just tourists or rental companies. There's residents up here that love this country and been here, live here year-round. And the other part of that rumor I heard about the new development code is called, "Oh, they want to get rid of the open areas." Now, who come up with that idea? What's wrong with the open areas? This isn't a city where you've got to have, you know, building after building after building. Those open areas, I live in a subdivision that has one of those, and that's one of the reliefs of the pressure of the neighborhood, of the congregation or whatever, or congestion. Last thing I wanted to bring up was, you know, we have, we have subdivisions up here that are single-lane roads through them, and there's lots of houses in there. It's not just a couple of them, there's lots of houses in there. They're single-lane roads. Now, if you look on the GIS or the cadastral, you know, they, their daughter, they look like they got 60-foot right-aways and two-lane roads. We, but when you go there, they're single-lane roads. We shouldn't allow, we shouldn't allow subdivisions to be approved, or at least not issue building permits until the, until the improvements are in.
Hi, I'm Steve Halliday. I live off Red Rock Road at the end of Alpenglow Way. Let me say to you guys, thank you for coming up. We love the representation, and we need representation. We need to see more of you. We need more access down in St. Anthony of you guys too. Now, I have several concerns. First one is unregulated Airbnb rentals. Every morning about 6:00 AM, 7:00 AM, I hear a car going across my cattle yard, going out down Alpenglow Way. Well, I tell you what it does. Unregulated Airbnbs adds traffic to the roads. Who maintains the roads? We do. They don't. We need more regulation on short-term rentals, Airbnbs. Second concern is the ongoing development areas with, all through Island Park, especially up on top of the hill where we are. We have two new developments, 40 acres here, 40 acres here. That's 11 lots, 11 lots. First of all, they come in, they cancel our easements. Then we have an issue. The only way we can resolve issues is litigation. Litigation costs us money. We've been up here for quite a while, we don't need that. Please help us with this development issue. The second one, or the third one is, it's already brought up. Fire scares the hell out of me down there along Red Rock Road with all of the campers that we have there constantly. When a fire starts there, it comes up this way and will burn us all out on top of that Alpenglow Way. We don't have, and one road in, one road out. We're coming, coming to you guys for help on that ingress-egress for emergency evacuations. I know it's going to impact BLM land... I know it's going to impact BLM land, Forest Service land, and maybe some other developing lands up there for another road out in case of an emergency. We need some help from the county on these issues. The last one is, again, representation. We need to be able to access you guys and your staff and your people down in St. Anthony. That's basically all I wanted to say. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate that. My concern is the snow removal in the winter and the removal of the road bed. Last summer, I paid $900 to fill a pothole with two truckloads of gravel. I come back this spring and the gravel's in the field. Two inches of the top of the gravel is in the field. I understand that you guys don't fix the roads and I'm more than happy to pay for it, but I'm not going to do it again. That guy should have to come out and he should have to remove that gravel and put it back on the road where it belongs. And he should not be able to remove the road bed when he's plowing snow. And another concern of mine is garbage dumps in the neighborhoods. I have a neighbor who had a garbage dump and it's not cleaned up, but he's been working on it a little bit. But he had a golf cart and a snow blower and other machines out there, a snowmobile. And I think those things contain toxic waste. And I don't see, he brought that stuff from Blackfoot up to his property, through my property, to dump it in his dump. I know, you see a lot of places like that around Island Park, and we need help with that. Once again, thank you for your help.
Dennis Browning. And then Andy Wilson and Keith Esplin.
I'm going to be real short because even though I was in sales for 40 years, I'm going to intentionally cut it short. I want to thank this gentleman for bringing up, you know, the emergency evacuation and everything else. We appreciate you coming here. And I can't speak for everybody, but I'm, this is our second home. It's a family heirloom. I'm the son of the original owner. We just spent the last week with my family. It could go to five or six generations. So I have some very emotional attachments to this cabin beyond a lot of folks. My question being, I'm on North Big Springs Loop Road. I'm right on the county road. And it faces Sawtail Drive. And it's maybe not even your department. It may be the IDT or something. But what are the plans for more, for safer crossings on US 20? Because right now, I mean, we're lucky this year. I just believe that whatever government agency, if it's you guys or a state or county or US, I realize that the highway is a federal highway. But a lot of these crossings, there's going to be fatalities going up with the increased traffic. And people come flying through here, they pay no attention to the 45. Well, some of them do, but not all of them. I mean, I've had people, I've sat there, waited to go southbound on 20 for 20 minutes last summer one time. And there ought to be a better plan. I mean, we don't even have flashing yellows above the, like Elk Creek's even worse than our crossing. But ours goes straight across, not really. I mean, they kind of, whoever put them in never lined them up. So that's, that's all I wanted to say. I just want to, safety, you know, I would just worry about people dying out here. Because what did we have last year? Eight fatalities in Fremont County? That's way too many. Thank you.
Thank you also for coming. My name's Andy Wilson. I'm an emergency physician in Texas. I'm usually really loud, but our family has been coming here since the 1930s. We love Island Park. I have not been coming here since the 1930s. But since the 70s, they've had a cabin in Sawtail Estates. My father-in-law has. And my wife and I have owned property here since 2016. I think, you know, and as our family's outgrown, the family A-frame cabin, we've benefited from some of the rentals around here. Every summer, we rent a cabin. So I'm pro-rental. But by the same token, I, and I'm a little late to the party of the issues because I've been on one side of it. But I do listen to my neighbors and I'm concerned about the lack of enforcement. We're in a rental right now over on Bootjack. And, you know, last night at 11, 12 o'clock at night, you know, there's loud parties and we couldn't fall asleep. That wasn't quite as bad, though. We might need some other type of enforcement because about 3:30 in the morning, a cow was either getting eaten by a grizzly bear or something for about 30 or 40 minutes. But so I'm in general, you know, there's a lot of different folks in here, but I'm generally opposed to additional government or more regulations. I think this is one instance where I think most people would come together and say, some common sense regulation to keep it a nice place to come and live. And to come and rent, frankly, you know, for those who want to enjoy it. We want to welcome those people who want to come and rent and do so respectfully and not accost people in their home or, you know, do the crazy things that are done. The other thing I want to talk about is kind of along the lines of what Steve brought up with fire. I'm one of those people who's purchased property north of Two Top. And spent a lot of time with engineers trying to figure out how we can subdivide that and have safe ingress-egress. I'm not the one canceling easements, by the way. So I think it's important that we address those issues. I know there's not a lot of roads that are controlled by the county and there are some limitations. But maybe there's a way proactively to look forward on some of these developments like my own and the other one going next to me to kind of make sure that we can get out quickly. I have toured through the Paradise Fire in California. And I think people underestimate, and I'm not a fire person, but I have a lot of friends that are. And there are fire people here have spoken, but it was astonishing to me how quickly, with a similar fuel source to what we have up here in Island Park, it just whips on through. And, you know, I'm not as fit as I used to be and running through the fields might not save me. I probably need to get in the car and get out. So I think that's all I had. I just appreciate you guys coming up, as others have said. I think you'll sense there are some significant concerns. And I don't think anyone here is 100, well, I shouldn't say that. I don't know everyone here. But I don't think it's an extreme position of no rentals. It's a position of common sense regulation and then enforcement. So that's all.
And then Ralph Connor and Nancy Stoudt.
Commissioners, I'm Keith Esplin. I live on East Rainbow Road. Our subdivision was, I think, platted in the 1930s. I don't think it has a name. But we've lived there for about a year full-time. We rebuilt an old family cabin that was built in the early 60s. And we really, really appreciate the opportunity. Just briefly on short-term rentals, I appreciate a lot of the comments that have been said. I might, in our case, we do have a permit for rental. We live on the ground level and then we rent out the upper level. And it works really, this probably isn't a pattern that works for everybody because they don't live here all year round. But for us, we found it to work really well. We haven't had a trouble with rentals. But since we live there, they're not creating problems and partying and doing stuff. So it's been a good pattern for us. And I think that could be encouraged. It could be one possible solution. And we, I wanted to touch on the fires. I think a lot of the issues Liz Davy brought up. I wish I'd been able to attend the Sustainable Fire Community meeting last week. But in my job, I attend a number of Zoom meetings or live meetings. And some of the issues have been regarding the fires in California. And they point out that a lot of the problem is way overloaded fuel sources. They claim that in California, there's double the number of trees as there should be in the forests. I see, I see areas of our forests, including subdivisions, where people are trying to raise a lodge, pull pine about every foot. And they're not going to be healthy trees growing that thick. So I know that's probably not a county issue, but we're, it could be encouraged. I would, I think we all need to encourage thinning of forests and trees to make our community more sustainable. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming to the meeting and listening to us. I'm going to tell a story. I live, I have a place on the Buffalo River subdivision. It's on the same side of the road, or the river as Ponce Lodge. It's on deeded property. We're on the sewer. And there's a Forest Service road that comes into it. It's our responsibility to maintain that road. We have garbage, or sewer, as I said. We pay our fair share of the sewer. There's a guy that's rented. I don't think he's paying his share. We pay our property taxes, ever exceeding property taxes, and they keep going up. It's a subdivision of four lots. Okay, one's being rented. Now, I just started keeping track. I got so tired of it. The guy has it on Airbnb. And one night, there were 17 people in there and they built a fire. There's fire signs everywhere. I yelled at him and told him to put the fire out. The next night, there's 17 more people. Guy gets in a fight with his wife at 2:30 in the morning. I got out of bed and said, "Shut up and go to bed." The next day, the next time I go out there and there are a dozen cars, a gigantic truck, or boat, and a trailer in the parking lot, and there are a million people. And I said to the lady with blue hair, by the way, that, "How many of you are there?" She says, "Well, I think there are 23, but there's some kids." And I said, "Holy Christ." The mayor's office, the Island Park Mayor's office over there, and I was over there. And so I walk in the office over there, the mayor lady, and I said, "God, here's, what do I do?" And she's, "Let me make a phone call." So she called somebody down at the county and said, "Hey, that guy doesn't even have a permit. He's just renting that place, living in the house." I would bet you, he's not paying taxes on the money he gets. He's getting, he's paying, you pay 600 a night to stay there. He gets 25, if he gets 25 rentals in a month, that's $15,000. Yeah? That's a lot of money. You can pay a lot of cleaner ladies to come in and clean it up. Anyway, I'm asking you guys to get somebody that we can call and talk to about, I think this guy says he's got 10 bedrooms. I swear, probably the bedroom's about the size of this table. You have to go outside to get up. Anyway, I would like to see some help. Now, I know the people are not paying their fees. I just know it. I've heard stories. But if you look on Airbnb, there must be 1,000 listings. I don't know how many there are, but there's a lot. You could hire somebody. You could hire a high school girl. To go in there and look at those listings on Airbnb. Go in there, see if they're, see if they're paying you. And if you haven't got enough money, ready to go away.
And at some point, if some of the comments can repeat it, you could just stand up and say, "I did what Ralph said," or "I did whatever." So come on. And then Dave Chubb at Paul Nelson.
I'm Nancy Stoudt, and we're over on Bill's Island. My concern, I read in the newspaper where they were commissioned to put two stoplights, one at Robins Roost and one at Elk Creek. And I just want to say how important that is with the increase of traffic and to get them up before somebody has an accident and is killed. My neighbor had an accident there this year. And I've almost been hit twice on the intersection by Robins Roost. So I would like to see the stoplights be put up sooner than later.
Paul Nelson and Tracy Reynolds. Dave? Be sure to say your subdivision, if you would.
You bet. My name's Dave Chubb, and I live in Calbell subdivision. I have a house there about 10 years now. I'm here, I appreciate you gentlemen attending. There's been a lot of good things said this evening. A lot of repetition, but that probably increases the importance. My issue really becomes, you know, kind of a bottom-line issue. And I know the question is, how do we pay for all these things that the audience is asking for? And I, I guess the amount of time I've spent in Island Park, it seems like the area is treated a little unfairly as far as the improvements and the things that we see happen here. Enforcement creates revenue. And all the housing is, we pay pretty good property tax, too. So my comment is just to keep all that in mind. Because I think personally, Island Park doesn't really receive their fair share based on the revenue that they give.
And then Tracy Reynolds and then Dave Richards.
Good evening, county commissioners. Thank you so much for being here tonight. I know it's a long drive up the hill and be careful on your way home. My name is Paul Nelson. I live in Shotgun Valley. My concern tonight has to do with unpermitted nightly rentals in Island Park. To be clear, I am not against people renting out their cabins whatsoever. However, I'm concerned about the growth of unpermitted nightly rentals in recent years. So in February 2021, the Concerned Property Owners of Island Park conducted an analysis of all the rentals in Island Park on VRBO and Airbnb and found there were upwards of 1,000 rental spaces being offered nightly. 1,000 rental spaces being offered nightly. When we examined the data from the Fremont County and found that at that time, only 155 rentals were permitted in Island Park. This is February of 2021. So this greatly concerns me and obviously many in our community. Fremont County has an excellent, excellent permit rental permitting system. The system ensures that a potential renter's water is tested for disease such as E. coli and that sewer or septic systems have the capacity of holding upwards of 30 renters for 35 to 40 weeks of nightly use a year. The permit ensures that. However, with only 155 rentals permitted in Fremont County out of roughly 1,000, Fremont County's permitting system is failing to ensure that all rentals are permitted and consequently following the rental guidelines and ordinances, especially those I've described above about sewers. So in order to ensure that all rental spaces in Island Park are permitted properly, I'd like to respectfully suggest that the Fremont County hire a rental enforcement officer. I realize that despite the fact that almost 7 million of Fremont County's $9 million budget comes from Island Park, funding for this might be difficult. So I would propose this plan to fund. Initial renter permits cost anywhere from $200 to $500. If a renter compliance officer is able to investigate and bring to permit at least 500 of the approximately 800 unpermitted rentals, an average cost of $300 per rental, this would bring the Fremont County upwards of $150,000. This alone would pay for the officer plus the additional clerical time to get these permits done at the county office. I'd like to further propose that the yearly renewal for rental permits be increased to sustain the position of a renter compliance officer. Currently, Fremont County charges proprietors only $50 every other year. every other year, every other year, to renew their permits. Fifty dollars. As an aside to that, that means every other year, the sewer is checked. Every other year, the water is checked, not every year. So, I would propose that permit renewals be required annually, that the fee be raised from an average of a hundred and fifty, depending on Class One, Class Two. You guys figure that out. But look, with approximately a thousand rentals in the system, if this fee was brought in, you'd bring in an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year, if you permitted them every year.
Dave Richards and Renee Whitney.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your time tonight. It's much appreciated. Um, I can't. I don't know how I can beat that because that's right where I was going with the permit. There's enough, if we get a good permits in place, Island Park wide, Fremont County wide, charge a reasonable fee for that permit, there's plenty enough money to go enforce some of the stuff we see going on. I would like to say the enforcement part is key and having someone to go to, to give that complaint to is key. And I'll give you a recent example from this last month. We have a short terminal next to us, and it's the first time they've rented out. Of course, their sewer overloaded. Their solution to that was five gallon buckets that they took out of the sewer, went over, dumped in the wetlands. Bucket after bucket. Now, we got capacity for the renters. So, man, that raises your hair. No one to really go talk to, but we did what we did when we went, when they had the permit application at Island Park. Called the mayor, called the people responsible to go talk to them, filed our complaints, did everything by the book. What we got back was, there was no one to enforce it. There's nothing we can do. So, danger to the wetlands, danger to health, danger to our water sources, no recourse. And the reason for that is there's no enforcement agency. There's no one to go levy fines. There's no one to hold them accountable. So, I think that is really the portion we need is to get some agency in place, some department in place that can go help, hold accountability to what we see. So, the other thing, I was, I'm with the North Henry's Lake Property Owners Association. The one thing they asked me to come speak to them for is we live right at the hill on 87, and the transition goes from a 45 or 65 to a 45. And that, that sucks, the transition's right at the top. So, what you see are semis, and particularly for the noise, accelerating to go up the hill to make it, see the sign at 45, and then ride their brake brakes all the way down 87, down the hill, through the neighborhoods. And a simple change that we think could really have an impact is to move that 45 sign just a couple hundred yards down the hill. Put up the flashing 45 transition lights that seem to really help get people's attention. And that way, they can slow down going up the hill. When they get to the top of the hill, they should be at 45 and don't have to ride their brakes all the way down the other side. So, I don't know if you have the power to work with the transportation department or others in the area, but that simple, small change to a speed limit, a couple hundred feet, would be immeasurably helpful to us. So, again, thank you for your time.
My name is Renee Whitney, and my husband and I live in the Cowbell development just west of McCray Bridge. I just want to reiterate my support for what I think is a summary of what we've heard here is the importance that we have reasonable regulations, that we have education for both the renters, the property owners, the property managers, and the neighbors. So, we know what our rights are. And finally, enforcement. So, I'd like to use the rest of my time to tell you a cautionary tale of what happened in our little area last month. One morning, we woke up and went on a walk, and there was a short-term rental in our subdivision. And next to that is a community dock that some of us went together to put in. We walked down to the dock, and there, in the driveway of the short-term rental, were sixteen ATVs. In addition to that, there was a big trailer. There were all kinds of pickup trucks. And they all had Minnesota license plates. Continuing our walk down the street, we found a semi with a large trailer bed parked in the forest with another trailer next to it. So, we started wondering what was allowed. Turns out that the short-term rental is not registered, even though we were told it was. And when the noise was exceeding and we were concerned, it's a four-bedroom cabin with three bathrooms. And I was told by one of the occupants that there were eighteen to twenty people. They're not counting children. So, we're concerned about the effect on our water, on our, the sewer system. So, things got a little heated. We called the sheriff, and he went out. And the result was, he said it was licensed, but we've since found out it wasn't. And he told us as residents, we should stay away or things will get heated. So, now, we can't even walk in our own property. So, I think that enforcement is really key once we get the rules established. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
My name is Dave Richards, and I share a lot of the concerns that you do. But what my wife Nancy usually says is, "Don't worry, Dave. It's going to snow in three months." And things will change. My concern is, is a takeout place, since they developed Max Inn to what it is now, a takeout place for the floaters. And we are lucky that about forty percent of the floaters float all the way down to Max Inn and takeout down there. But the other ones now takeout on a piece of property that belongs to the Forest Service, just kind of in the middle of our subdivision. And we have a road, it's a Forest Service road that's maintained by the county. I think mainly because the sewer line and the sewer pumps and things like that go up the road. But this road, we have fifteen mile an hour speed zone on it, and that has been approved by the county sheriff's office, as I met with them. It was ten. They said it has got to be fifteen, so we went to fifteen. I asked if we could put speed bumps on it, and speed bumps aren't allowed in Idaho, I was told. So, what we do is we put up.
I'm so sorry. 2F43522, white GMC pickup out here. It's restricting access to the gates or the doors for the ambulance. 2F43522. Standing cab, white GMC.
Don't worry, it'll snow in four months. So, this road, just this summer, we have had two close calls because property lines the edge of this road, and the kids get up here, and they're so excited to go to the river. It's down the hill or across the road to the river. And two, two, we're just this far apart from an uncle or a dad grabbing and stopping or jumping out in front of the car on one of them. I talked to the sheriff's office. Well, I talked to one of the officers up here, which I do every year, and tell them our situation. I happened to talk to the fellow last time that handles the little blinking lights that are in some places on the road. And he said, "I would like to put one of those there, but I don't know if they go down to fifteen miles an hour," which may be true. And I have seen a sheriff's car go up and down the road once in a while, but it is a very dangerous situation. We wish the takeout place could have been, is my time up? Time up. We wish it was down closer to Max, but we've got to live.
Okay, Bernie, Ian Murphy, and then David Latimer.
Thank you for being here. My concerns have been stated, for the most part, on Bernie Zylar, Max Inn. I'd like to see the roads maintained in Max Inn. There are plenty of speed bumps going the other way. And they're terrible. We pay huge taxes. I'd also like you to think of the fact that was stated earlier, seven million out of your nine million budget, county budget is generated up here. Please take care of your golden goose. Keep it healthy, whatever you think. You know, common sense rules and enforcement. The more, you know, we're showing our place to all the visitors, and we hope that generates revenue for the county and thereby makes it a win-win situation. And to that point of putting forth a good look, you know, making us look good, keep the roads good, no junkyards, unresidential lots, condemn and remove buildings that are falling down or have been vacated or abandoned, please. Another thing that wasn't mentioned was when the Forest Service tries to do controlled burns, there are non, there are outside organizations that stop us, stop them with litigation. I think we all agree there's an excess amount of fuel on the ground. We don't want another situation where the farmers who gratefully came up and stopped the fire in '88 had to work that hard to do that. I think we can probably make it a lot easier by letting the U.S. Forest Service do their job. But there have been outside forces stopping them in the courts, okay? If it's good science that their decisions are based on, let them practice. Thank you.
And David Latimer, we, we're only about fifteen more minutes. So, if somebody else has said what you're going to say, please just try to let's keep it really short so we can get to as many as possible.
Okay, I will keep it short because both my points have been made already. But one is about possibly changing our codes here from residential to cabin recreational. I'm not in favor of that, and I don't think there's anybody in this room that's in favor of that. You know, I bought my cabin because I wanted my neighbors. I wanted good friends. I wanted it to be residential. And I don't, frankly, I don't think anybody has a right to change that on me. The other point was the rental cabins, of course. Everybody's upset about rental cabins. The good point was made about charging a higher fee. Most of these cabins, they get, you know, two hundred to five hundred to six hundred dollars a night for renting them. There's no reason those people shouldn't pay at least five hundred dollars a year for a license. Just like she said, if they did that, you know, you'd have more than enough money to pay for the enforcement. And I, believe me, I understand that it costs a lot to enforce, and I understand it's a hard job. But I honestly think that if you charged enough for the licenses that there's just more than enough money to pay for somebody to enforce it. So, I really do appreciate you all coming up here tonight. And I know sometimes it's hard to take people almost yelling at you, and I'm, believe me, I'm not. I just want you to hear, you know, what we really are concerned about because we really are concerned. Sometimes we sit around campfires at night and talk about it when we can't have a campfire. You know, it's almost like nobody wants to say anything because it's like, oh, whatever they're going to do, they're going to do. But please take what we said, you know, and think about it because there's, there's absolutely nobody in this room that wants their codes to be changed to cabin recreational. It really isn't.
And then David Moore. And keep it short, please. And stand by the, you can see it.
My name's Ian Murphy. I represent Car Springs. We're a family-owned cabin. We've been there since the 1930-ish range, down on Rainbow Road. I have a lot of the same concerns as I've heard brought up before is the Airbnbs or rental properties not being licensed. We have one just down the road from us. Our roadways have seen extra wear and tear due to these people who have no concerns about the roadways or the wildlife areas. They're only here for the weekend. They're only here for, you know, a day or two. They don't have the same feelings that I think all of us do. I have put in blood, sweat, and tears to help build what we have. So, I respect our areas. I know the place down from our cabin did not get registered. It is not registered. We have written complaints. We have filed complaints. We've talked to people, and it's, well, until there's a big issue where the septic tank breaks, there's nothing we can do. So, our concern is that why should we wait until there's an issue before we do something about it? And it goes, goes back to enforcing these laws, putting in strict regulations, charging them more. I'm not going to beat a dead horse because I think we've talked about it enough tonight. But those are some of the concerns we have. So, thank you, gentlemen, for coming up. I appreciate it.
And David Moore and then Connie Day.
Hello, thank you. My name's Dave Moore. I live in Buttermilk subdivision, we call it the big one. But we're actually in Wilding One, and all those little two-track roads that go up there have, don't have egress. And I work very closely with the Forest Service because I'm the chairman of the Island Park Sustainable Fire Community, Board of Directors. And most of my board is here tonight, supporting our efforts to do this sort of thing. We are nonprofit, charged with the goal of making Island Park a fire-adapted community. That's a big deal, and we've worked hard on it since 2012. And we receive grants from the Forest Service administered by Idaho Department of Lands. And we've been pretty successful with these, with these grants over the last several years. They're about $240,000 each. And we reduce fuels big time in Island Park. All the slash pickup is our responsibility. We're just going through it right now. And I know one person had thirteen, fifteen loads, big loads taken to the, to the dump for, not the dump, but the slash pile. So, I mean, we really move a lot of fuels with our grants. And we anticipate a large FEMA grant next year to do about sixty lots of private, private properties. And this is, this is going to be great. So, we're aware and have received help from the County Emergency Management Director, Keith Ritchie. And we, he's done a lot of things for us. He's been on our, he's been one of the founders of Island Park Sustainable Fire Community through the county. And what we'd like to say is, we'd appreciate becoming recipients of any county grants that you may run across that are going to come up here. Because we've been talking about this for years, and we haven't seen the county go after these things. There's lots of money out there, especially with all the fire awareness right now. And our community is fire-aware. We have seen to that. We've had a lot of meetings, and everybody's afraid up here. We live in a, we live in the WUI, which is the wildland interface. So, we are right there. We could be at California, and this year is very dry. So, fortunately, we got this rain the other day, but it won't be there in September. We would like to have you pass on to us any information you can get of grants that we could come to us and we could administer for you because we are your fire-aware people. Thank you.
Thornton Wade. And then Connie Day's next. And then Kay Ridley, if we have time.
That's all right. My question didn't answer itself.
Perfect, thank you.
Hey, my name's Thornton Wade, and I'd like to talk to you about the short-term rental issue. I'm head of the Pine Haven HOA, and I'm talking on behalf of all the residents of Pine Haven. We don't allow rentals, but it's obvious to us that there's a need for licensing. We have a property owner who rents his properties contrary to our covenants. And we're dealing that through the legal system, but it's a long, painful process. We've been at it for years. Every time I see those lights at the end of the tunnel, it's a train coming towards me. We would like your help on this issue. He is advertising. He is advertising all four of his places on the KSL website. This one expires August twelve. This gives you, this is what I'd like to show you. He has four cabins, and before I describe what it's like renting them, I need to describe the cabins. The place he, primary, his primary rental is what we call the flat top, and he, his people are staying in it every night, or many nights this summer. This is what it looks like. The bathroom floor is about to fall out, he has holes in the porch. Last summer, he had refrigerators closed with bungee cords filled with rotten food. He tells his renter not to drink the water, the wiring is suspect, the cabin is infested with mice, and he does not clean the linen between visitors. So when one person complained, he said, he said, "Well, you can use my cabin next door." And I know you can't see this, I'm sorry. Drive by sometime. So he said, "You can stay in the third floor of my, this three-story palace." He put up a refrigerator, sofa, bed, and everything. Getting up there is not easy, you can step there, but don't step on that board because it's rotten. He has no water, sewer, or electricity. Okay, then there's the A-frame by the, by the highway, I'm sure all of you have seen it. It's a landmark, I guess. I always know where to turn when I'm going to find you. Again, the water suspect, the minimal wiring. I think he's fixing it up to rent it again, but it's so bad that last, again, you can't see this either, but last spring, some Mennonite women with children came up, they were getting out of Mexico because of COVID. They showed up, and they immediately called the sheriff, and the county paid to take them back down to the valley so they could find a place to live. The Salt Lake Express driver who, who dropped them off was so concerned, he stopped by on the way back to make sure they were safe. Then he also offers his own residence to people. I'm sorry. It's, I won't even go into it, I just can't. He talked to a real estate agent this summer, this spring, said, "Can you rent this place out for me?" And the agent said, "Well, I need to go and take some pictures of it." And he said, "No, you don't wanna do that." And he said, he went in, and he, he almost got sick. So we need your help on clamping down on this, on this rental. The renters that stay there, he doesn't like us to talk to the renters, but we have talked to them. There was one couple from London a couple of years ago. They'd flown in from London to Salt Lake, driven up for vacation, they opened the door, and they said, "Uh-uh." So the part of their vacation began off trying to find a place to stay. And that, I was in there for Pine Haven, and it's everybody else.
Can I give him my time? She's on there. Okay, I'll give him my time, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
The other night, someone called me and, because they'd, they'd gone in the door, they said, "Uh-uh," and they called me to see if I, what was going on, how come he was renting, and I could not give them an answer. The Pine Haven Planning Board has talked to Airbnb, VRVO, to try to stop it, and they say, "Not our problem." I contacted the KSL website, they say, "Not our problem." Craigslist, you know, there's no, no way to feedback on that. And so we've done everything we can, as I said, we're in the legal system, we spend thousands of dollars on lawyers, and we're, we just need your help to enforce the existing regulations. I know you don't have a lot of resources, but this is a true health and safety deep, a fact. These people are renting there, they wanna come up for vacation, they have no idea what they're getting, and it's just, it's awful. I think, as I said, he advertises on every possible website, it's whack-a-mole, it really is. But if you go by Pine Haven, you'll see these little pieces of paper posted, nailed to the street signs, he's advertising for his places.
Thank you so much.
I want to thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate you hearing our concerns as a community. I have a place out in Shotgun, I'm fortunate to have property and a home to live in here. I'm also the executive director of the Island Park Charter School. So a couple of issues, one is, there's, there were some questions about crossings at Elk Creek and, now by Robins Roost. Max In is a really dangerous place, too, I observe that daily, so keep that in mind. Another thing, just really quickly, is that we had an emergency at the school last year. I called dispatch and asked for a sheriff to come over, and I was told they're in St. Anthony, nobody can come. We, our tax dollars roll down this hill really well, but we need services to come up here. And, and that was really frustrating as well. When I call, it's because I have an emergency with a child, and there's nobody available because they're down the hill. That's not okay, we pay our taxes here, we deserve to have services here. Island Park is a beautiful place to live, it's a beautiful place to come and recreate and to work, and some of us are fortunate to have property here and to live here. Many people that see Island Park as a way to make money. We wanna see Island Park as a way to make community. And because, because Island Park is seen by many people as a great way to make money, workers that live here, that want to live here, can't find housing. I have a friend who's, who's renting a cabin right now for three thousand dollars a month because she needs to pay the, the monthly rent, the nightly rental. They reduced it to only a hundred dollars a night. But three thousand dollars a month is out of reach for most workers who are in this area. Families are priced out of the market. I have a lot of contact with families because I, I work with the school. Families are having a hard time finding housing. We wanna make this a community. We don't wanna just make money here, we wanna make it a community. There are other communities that have dealt with this issue. We're not the only one in Idaho that's dealt with this issue, this issue. Some have dealt with it better than others, some have waited too long and, and don't have control of it. They have to bus workers in from other cities. We're getting close to that, but we need your help in planning and creating codes and ordinances that make it possible for families and workers to live in this community and to make it a community, not just a place where people, where people from wherever they are can make money from us. So we ask for your help with this, to make, to help us make this a community. We'll work with you, but we don't, we don't want our workers and our families priced out of living here. Thanks.
We have five people left, but it's twenty after, what do you say? Let him go? Okay, Josie, Maya Matheson, Bermo Carmo, Brian Farmer, and then Mark Firehoff.
I think I signed the wrong list.
Tell me what your name is. Okay, Jokes, thank you very much. One left. Maya. Aronzo DiCarlo.
Fernando.
Fernando, there, and then Brian Farmer, and Mark.
Thank you for coming up here. My concern is basically with the short-term rentals. In two thousand nine, we had a building that went up behind us, and we kept, we kept asking basically what this was, and they kept saying, "Oh, it's for our family." We ended up turning in a whole bunch of complaints because we couldn't figure out what was going on. And we end up, in two thousand eleven, the building was deemed a commercial lodge, which they said it was bypassed through any kind of commercial because it was on residential lot, that it was bypassed because it was a remote lodge, and they did a loophole. I'm hoping this doesn't happen anywhere else. It can sleep forty-eight people, but its occupancy is two hundred and twenty-two people. And we, we ended up, basically in two thousand fourteen, we, we sold everything, moved down the road. Thankfully, we had a lot that we could go build on a mile down the road. But I wanna make sure, at what I can see, and I've tracked it through the years, they still pay residential taxes, but they're deemed a commercial lot at, or a commercial lodge because it was a remote. The planning and zoning administrator was the one that was able to do that. There were no, no kind of, any kind of public meetings to turn it over to a commercial. I wanna make sure that doesn't happen. I don't know how many other places are like this in Island Park, but you guys, as for our tax base, these people are not paying a commercial lot, and it, it is absolutely, I, I've gone back and forth with the county, and I get no response besides this is getting forwarded to the planning and zoning administrator. He's the one that made the choice to do it, they said it's a loophole, doesn't have to go to commissioners or anything, so I just wanna, it's, it's not a subdivision, it was a, it's allotted lots that were sold off to, like after it was homestead, off of Chick Creek. So we get forty to sixty cars or more that come down every day. We have the scout camp as well, so we have a Forest Service road that gets obliterated, and we're at the point that we have to either pay to, to grade the road, to whatever, but it's, it's absolutely beyond unless we have deep pockets to go fight things. And at this point, it's been grandfathered in, it's been sold to another private party. And I just wanna know how many other places have this going on that you guys don't know about? There's no short-term rental, they don't have to go buy anything, it's commercial. So that's basically my gripe, is wanting to make sure that that loophole gets closed, because it happened in two thousand eleven, I'm assuming it happened with the new code that was then. But if you guys can help us out and make sure that doesn't happen anymore, because as, as the county, they're losing revenue, and I think it needs to be fixed now, but nobody will talk to me unless I get a lawyer, and at that point, how far do you go?
I might, I had a little concern, but little, two problems. Two or three problems I have. I understand about the complaints about the BNB. I am in two in the BNB, too. But, I mean, the reason I go to BNB is because I am no rich man. I live my whole life right here in this wonderful town, it's gorgeous. I grew right here, I'm eighteen years old when I come here. It's a lot of BNB. I understand everybody's concern about BNB. The rules is talking a lot of people, but poor rules, more strict rules, it's all right. But some, some people, it hurts. They just come in and buy it and rent it. But people for us, pay that much money for big rule, it's just, it's just, it destroys our low class, living for years in here. That's the only reason I go and I rent my place for BNB, to survive in my grand town, in my beautiful town. And somebody said, "But, but find a place to live in here, to work." The low-class people living here for years, it's impossible, compete and leave it. What happens, is there's a lot of people here, living for years, and they're losing cabins. I had friends, they move away because there's, there's no way to pay taxes and pay their big bills because somebody coming and buying these mansions and renting. And we had to, we had county comparable to us, the low class, to pay the same, the neighbor, when we no had the money. And there's a lot of friends, I know a lot of friends, the same situation. And then we lose the work, workers, and work for this community, for people coming, and used to be Hollywood for these people, and move away because somebody with big money coming and buying and renting, and it, he know work, and he sell it, and he go away. We stay here. We are hurt. And I feel so bad because my heart is like in an island park, my life is an island park. That's the only reason I'm going to BNB, to survive. There's no way we go comparable to a rich person and coming and buying two, three cabins, or maybe never living in here, and just pay somebody rented to them, for them. So what happened to us, what happened to our low class to, to survive. I'm living almost forty years, my kids grow here. Finally, I take it to college, and you say, "Who, who just a minute, how, how get that money?" The only reason, the only way I can handle it to, to find that money, rent that cabin. You had to make the difference, to make the, the pay the local and the, in the community.
And then Mark Firehoff, and what's that?
You know, I'm Brian Farmer, live in Stone Gate. You've heard these, be these fine people's concerns, their fears? And I concur with all of them. They've spoken about every issue I was gonna come up here and talk to, other than the one.
Powder.
Powder, okay. They've all spoken about all the issues except for one concern of mine so far, is with the continuation from Fremont County, allowing the continuous rentals, the building of rentals, the community of rentals, the flatland build communities of rentals, and so on, okay? And the construction, the continuous. Has there been any impact studies, or will there be any impact studies on the infrastructure of the electrical, the water, the environment? And the pollution that's floating down our rivers from all these big, major corporations? I mean, you can talk with the Forest Service folks. They monitor the rivers, down below Max, drops down in the coffee pot, how many plastic bottles and garbage trash bags they've collected just recently since the Marriott was allowed here. So our groundwater's are being polluted, our wells are being polluted. And the sake of what, to make a dime? There's gotta be some means of control. Island Park is a delicate balance. And the electrical grid alone is no way gonna be able to support what is happening out here beyond these people's control. It's gonna collapse. I don't know that we've ever really put that much more money into our electrical grid to upgrade it, to see if there's any, is there any backup emergency? Facilities are little to none, everyone here loves, they're all invested into this place. They've sunk everything they've got into these homes here. And then what, for somebody else to come in from out of state and just build up some big, I don't know, what was the, two hundred and twenty-some-room place and make another million dollars a year like they really needed it in the first place? Please, impact studies?
Well, mine's not really for the directors. I'm Mark Firehoff, I live up in Frantinville subdivision, I'm on this Sustainable Fire Board. You guys have a lot of concerns about fire, and you guys left one big piece out. Where's Island Park's fire department? Where are they helping us at? I'm putting in my bid tomorrow to run for commissioner to try to help get our fire department to work with the community. What's that?
Well, then I'm done. I'm good.
Thank you very much, Mark. Okay. Would any of you three like to say anything?
I would like to hear a response of our concerns if you think they're valid.
Okay, now, so before we started the meeting, we said that, you know, it wasn't an official meeting, we're given feedback. It's up to them. It's, it's just a town meeting, so it's totally up to them if they want to.
And there was a lot, so...
And then there was really a lot. We have been taking minutes from what we're going to do from now is we've taken down some of your key concerns. We've asked for volunteers for committees in the back. If there's a specific area that you want to help us with, it's islandpark723@gmail.com. Send me a note, sign up at the bottom. We'll put some working groups together to focus on some of the different key issues that were identified tonight. Commissioners, would you like to say anything other than, "Thank you for coming up"?
I would like to say, we realize that you have concerns. I mean...
A little bit louder if you...
It's very difficult to deal with. I guess my question, I have one question. How many in here have a short-term rental?
Have a what?
Short-term rental.
And Commissioner, we have 20 or so people and quite a few of those have short-term rentals that have been, we have made it, this whole thing available to them, so...
Because, yeah, they're, they're definitely something that is very difficult to deal with. So, anyway, thank you guys. We really appreciate this area. I've always tried to come up here as much as I possibly could. Anyway, I like being a commissioner and I realize we have a lot of concerns here, so thank you.
I'd like to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to come into your community and listen to your concerns. Quite frankly, I think it's all of our opinions that you do count, your constituents of this county. But you have to realize, this is kind of like driving a ship. For example, to do regulations like on your short-term rentals and stuff, like getting enforcement levels up, personnel for that, inspectors, personnel for that, requires kind of skeleton or structure, started off by how much structure can we get from the fees that you're suggesting to increase, possibly some penalties for people not complying, stuff like that. But it still takes time to gel, get to something that works. Because if we, if we take off and do it half-boiled, what you get is a half-boiled egg. Doesn't work. And I know each and every one of you, where you're up here and that you've retired all your lives, you have significant investments in what you have here, you have absolutely valid concerns who want to protect those investments. And I get it. I think we all get it. I don't think that we're willing to shoot from the hip and do something that's going to collapse in 10, 10 months or a half, year and a half, and then we have to build over the ashes when it's been done it right and correct. What that's going to take is a few problems of adjusting as far as I can see. One, we need to coordinate with you. We work together and not just Island Park and commission. And Island Park commissioned the Forest Service. And as a force, we can start to turn this and make it a logical response that is not only valid, but it is enforceable and it's powerful enough to sustain an existence. I hope that there isn't any attitudes out there that feel that we need to do like the Walt Disney ferry with the long stick and star on the air and we fly around to the bad spots, go ding, and all these little stars come out and we're better now? Because that only exists on film. You know that, we know that. And so I just ask for your patience and allow us to work with you and let's get something designed. But I don't want to do this tomorrow. I don't want to do this next week. Let's start tonight.
Blair, would you like to say something?
Not a very good politician. Simply, we've only been in, Scott and I've only been in here for six months and I'm amazed at how much work has already been put forth in your behalf. I get the sense that you feel there hasn't been. I would contradict that. I believe that your interests and your concerns are the interests and concerns that we have talked about, discussed, wrestled, wrestled, excuse me, wrestled with since I've been in. And I know that they've been worked on before then. There's information that elicited considerable response from you that I want to check out. I'm not so sure that the information that has been presented in a couple of areas is the correct information. So I hope to be able to get back to you.
Write us a letter, Blair.
I'm not covering those points. I just want to look it out and look at it and verify those numbers, some of the numbers and information that was presented. So if that's a political suicide, that's okay. This is a job. I know it's a job and I'm going to do the best I can to make this job work and make it succeed and work with these two gentlemen to accomplish what needs to be accomplished wisely, but as timely as we can. So that's what I have.
Thank you all three of you again for coming and taking your time and listening to us. Thanks, Gary.